And a call to order. This is my maiden voyage, so we'll see how this goes. The first order of business is a roll call.
Youth member Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Nugent.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Willers.
Here.
Commissioner Wirick.
Here.
Vice Chair Donbach.
Here.
I wanted to point out for the record that Chair Barnett, Commissioner Barboz, and Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins are absent from this evening's meeting.
All right, moving on. The next item is approval of the agenda. So I was wondering if any of the commissioners have any other changes or comments to the agenda? Hearing none. Asked for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
So, a roll call. I'm sorry, thank you.
Commissioner Nugent.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Willers. Commissioner Willers.
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donbach.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Oh, youth member Miller, would you like to vote?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Youth member Miller, would you like to lead us? All right, now onto the next item, which will be comments from the public of any non-agendized items. So please come up. I don't know how many of you will be speaking, but depending on the number, we are limiting it to three minutes. If there are similar comments made by a representative speaker, please raise your hands, but don't be redundant, and you can add other things.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sedra Nathan, and I'm both a member of the Climate Action Commission and also co-president of the Valley of the Moon Garden Club. And I'm here tonight with a unified request. I'm asking you to embrace the vision for Sonoma that prioritizes health and the future of our community with regard to general planning. And tonight, there's a bunch of us who are going to be talking about that in terms of unified vision, and we all have a different thing that we're going to be talking about. I just gave a talk to Prose about how you're hearing a lot of different elements, people talking passionately about things in terms of the general plan. But just like the blind man talking about the elephant when they go up and talk about it, and you've got one person who's talking about the tail as a piece of rope, like housing is a really urgent issue, or someone talking about safety and equity, really urgent issues, blind men talking about the trunk like as a snake or the ear as a rug. These are all looked at as sort of disparate issues, but it's not. It's one issue. It's the elephant itself. It's our city, and we should be treating it holistically with regard to our general plan and the vision. And so our request is really simple. What we're asking for is for an element to be put into the general plan, and we're asking you as general planning commissioners to insist upon this, for a green way and a green and blue infrastructure to be incorporated, because what that does is it touches all those elements, from safety to housing to social equity. All those things are incorporated. And you see this in other cities and other general plans. And it should be done here. This is something that's prized, is prioritized. If you look at the comments that have been put into the general plan, indeed, if you listen to you guys, I heard you guys actually talking about this organically, and I thought, you're echoing the very sentiment of all the citizens in your own words, and this should be in the general plan. So when I hear Bill talk about form-based codes, when I hear Teresa talk about, you know, community connections, when I heard Steve talk about how much he liked pathways, all those things are the same things that you would get out of a unifying framework, which would be green and blue infrastructure. And so all these folks are going to be talking about that, but from their own unique perspectives and organizations and representing different ideas that can be pulled together in this green and blue infrastructure. And so tonight, while you're going to be hearing from several speakers representing different voices of the community, it's a unified framework that we're asking for. And since you're on the Planning Commission, you could be leading the charge. You could be asking, or actually not even asking, demanding through a motion that this be put into the general framework of our vision for the next 20 years, demanding this be put into the general plan. And having that set in place before it even gets to the city council, I mean, that's part of the Planning Commission's role. And so that's the group behind me. That's the group, actually, that's part of you. You're part of that group. And that's what you're going to be hearing tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. John Donnelly, 578 Seventh Street West, also Chair of the Parks and Recreation Open Space Commission, better known as PROS. And as Sedra just said, at our last meeting last week, we invited, the commission invited PROS to make a presentation on what I'm going to call the Green Infrastructure Plan to see how and why it should be an element in our general plan for the city. And she was enthusiastically received by the commission. I understand there's something like 70 hits on YouTube of her presentation. So there's a great deal of interest in this, including the people here tonight. Because her presentation was only a presentation, it wasn't an action item on our agenda last week, so we weren't able to take it up and make any recommendations. We're planning to do this at our next meeting in December. So tonight, I cannot speak on behalf of the commission, but I am speaking tonight as a member of the Sonoma community who happens to be curious about what is it that the PROS Commission is supposed to do in the city. And a quick answer to that is to look at the city code. And I won't go through all the fine print of the city code, but it says the Parks and Recreation Commission is to advise the city council on, let me put my glasses on for the small print here, among looking at advising on parks and recreation where the acquisition and preservation of open spaces, the restoration of important habitat within the city, improvements and modification in existing street through fairs, including but not limited to sidewalk areas, city parks, cemeteries, trails, bikeways, and related facilities. All would be nicely connected through a green plan and policies related to the plaza and other city parks. We also are the city's tree committee, and so we're very interested in enhancing the city's tree canopy, which is also part of the green infrastructure plan. So the question is, how could that, those duties be better met by our commission in the city if we had a green infrastructure overlay into the general plan? I can give you two examples, just thinking of what the PROS Commission might be anticipating in the upcoming projects. One would be that a master plan for all of Sonoma's parks and recreation spaces was supposed to have been developed at the end of the city's appointed Parks Recreation Task Force, which was chaired by Karen Collins and Steve Page. You know, that task force didn't complete its work. It didn't get to the fourth stage, which is after looking at the Protereo Consulting Group that did a benchmark study of eight cities, and Sonoma recommended we get on with a master plan for parks and recreation. So clearly, a green infrastructure overlay would be really helpful in identifying and helping us move forward with that. The second item that would be especially useful for us, for the PROS Commission, is that we just recently worked with the Climate Action Commission to do a CAL FIRE grant for a city forest management plan to increase the city's canopy. So finally, I would just say, we're all here tonight to support the plan. We know that it would help cross-coordinate among all the commissions so that we don't duplicate our work or get in conflict situations. So I'm not asking you to boldly go over. Nobody has led before. Many other cities have adopted this. And so I hope that we now can catch up and you're on board with this. Thank you.
Hello, I know many of you. I'm going to read, because otherwise I'll go off script and probably drag this on a little bit more than I need to. My name is Tim Freeman. I live at 1101 Princeton Drive in Sonoma. I've been a resident of the valley since 1999. I was on the Board of Directors of Lelous for over eight years when the budget went from approximately $250,000 a year to upwards of $1.3 million a year. I think that's an important point, just given some of the points I'll make later. I've been a member of the Sonoma Valley Citizens, excuse me, Community Association for approximately seven years. For five of those, I was the chair. I've been appointed by Susan Goran as the most recent member of the Sonoma County Planning Commission. I'm attending here as a citizen who sees how the city and county can work together, and hope they do. This will be a first general plan update I will be involved with. I've recently become the co-liaison with Cindy Lynn for schools of the Valley of the Moon Garden Club with responsibility for pollinator and other gardens at the schools throughout the valley. So yeah, I'm a volunteer. I'm speaking in support of the Green Links Initiative. I attended two of the initial conceptualization meetings the city had for the general plan and applaud the efforts that you guys have taken thus far. I've witnessed the discussions, and I can say that many of the requests people made would be incorporated with the Green Links Initiative. I think the Green Links structure provides an excellent framework for addressing many of the larger planning priorities with the general plan. I spent a decent number of years in Chicago and was blessed to see the emerald necklace created by Daniel Burnham in the late 1800s, who once proclaimed, "Make no little plans. They have no magic in them to stir men or women's blood." I just think that's an important one, so being bold is an important part of what you guys are going to be doing. The park system in Chicago is a huge asset to the city and the residents. People bike to work, school, recreate safely based on infrastructure, which was put in place in the late 1800s. We have the ability to make those investments now. They are long-term, which is the nature of the general plan. I look forward to the county plan to follow the lead of the city, because you guys are going first, tying the two together as seamlessly as possible. So I will be watching and applauding from the side and giving any support that I can. As a Realtor, I'd like to say a few words about social capital and equity, which are crucial to the vitality and resilience of a community. Social capital fosters trust, cooperation, and mutual support among community members, facilitating collaboration and collective problem solving. I think it's important that we're talking about links that go from the county into the city and go over a wide berth of different socioeconomic neighborhoods. When a community has strong social networks, individuals are more likely to engage in civic activities and support one another, enhancing overall well-being and quality of life. Equity ensures that resources and opportunities are distributed fairly, allowing all members, regardless of their background, to participate fully in community life. By addressing disparities and promoting inclusivity, equity helps to create a more cohesive and just community where everyone has a chance to contribute and thrive. Together, social capital and equity build a foundation for a more robust, harmonious, and resilient community, which I believe you all believe in. And I appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bonnie Brown. I'm a member of the Valley of the Moon Garden Club and a 24, 26-year resident of Sonoma Valley, just outside the city limits. You can say V-O-M Garden Club. It's a lot shorter than you know what we are. Valley of the Moon. So the club sponsors the Monarch Pollinator Garden here in town. It's over behind the First Congregational Church in Shur Shalom. And its purpose is to illustrate and inspire people to create their own pollinator gardens throughout the valley. Our goal is to get a whole swath of them throughout this valley. The Monarch Butterfly is actually the canary in the coal mine. I was, sorry when I say that. Their population has decreased by about 95% in the last two decades. And it's just emblematic of all pollinators. They're all in trouble. And when you think about it, one-third of all food we eat and drink has to be pollinated by an insect. The wind just doesn't do it. And we have a lot of the gardeners here in our town, organic gardeners, that really need to have those here for us. So small parks, alleys, parking lots, parking strips, and apartment decks, home patios are also important for pollinator survival, beautification, and ecosystem balance. You might say, well, gee, we've got lots of trees and stuff all around us. That doesn't do it. We need to have it in our town. Our vineyards are beautiful and beneficial in so many ways. They also create a monoculture, which is not beneficial to our ecosystem. Fields that once had wildflowers and grains now give no help to pollinators and have taken away their habitats for their next generation. So the solution to a monoculture is to create a balance by doubling down to restore balance in our ecosystem. I wish to address trees specifically. They are economic generators and assets to our town. They make shade or the lifeblood for creatures and create a sense of abundance and beauty. People come to live here and visit because of this country feeling and beauty. When a mature tree is cut down, all of this is lost forever. Replacing it with a few saplings somewhere else is really futile and kind of an insult. A strong tree ordinance to protect what we have must have teeth in it to be effective. Before a person or a developer plans a project, home or development, they must know that a healthy tree of a certain girth and height or important to this ecosystem must be part of their plans. No excuses. Let's not give away our assets and beauty of our town. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Connie Schlelein. I live at 587 Joaquin Drive. I moved here 10 years ago from Colorado. And I am the Chair of the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission, and I've spoken with you before. I am also a person who lived in a community that was an arts community. And it was a beet farming community when I moved to Loveland, Colorado. And they created a park system with a public art cultural plan that is one of the top 10 in the country now. So I've seen a transformation. I've also seen a community that came together. All the commissions, I was the Chair of the Visual Arts Commission, and all of the commissions in our community came together in the 80s, developed a master plan together, and created what is now a flourishing, thriving community that's extremely creative. I'd like to read you something that I heard in 2022 about my new community. It was, we were sitting in front of Reader's Books in August of 2022, and Ada Limone said this. "This is a community that lifts up the arts, whether it's painting and sculpture, or dance and poetry, or simply reading every book you can get your hands on," she said about her hometown. "It's a community that encourages kids who stare out at trees, to read about trees and write about trees, and become not just curious, but creative. I feel lucky to have grown up here, and I hope we continue to make everyone who lives here feel that way too." And everyone had goosebumps on a very hot day. So I wanted to let you know that the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission is revising the public art policy, which has existed for 20 years here, and to include temporary and public art, and also to look at the city map and discover where public art might go, because our goal is to improve city aesthetics and beautification and link, green link paths and parkways. And when we look at public art, a lot of people tend to just think about the plaza, but that is not always where it needs to go. There's a large extension of places like entryways and parks that we're charting. So along with the Green Links. So as a citizen, I'm in support of the Green Links pathway.
Hello, I'm Jay Smith. I live at 698 Broadway, which is the giant pink Victorian down here, a couple blocks away. We have a beautiful garden. If you guys are ever out for a walk, take a look in our, we're on the corner. You can't help but miss our garden. I'm the Vice President of the Garden Club here. I kind of wanted to share what we do in the community. We meet once a month. We've actually had Jennifer come speak earlier. We were at one of our meetings back in January, so we got a good view of the general plan. Some of the things we also do, we've given out two scholarships this year, $1,000 scholarships to students at the high school. Besides the Monarch Butterfly Garden that Bonnie talked about, we have one at the high school. We have one at Sasserini School. We're working on Marcy House right now, next door, improving their garden. We're working on a long-term plan for that. We also have revitalized the tranquil garden at the hospital. It was started back in the late 1990s, and it kind of went to another group, and we've taken it back, and we're trying to upgrade that. We've provided 10 schools with thousands of plants over the last 15 years to help them build their gardens. Our goal is to help integrate our projects throughout the city to have links for the birds and insects and pollinators to connect through our city. And by connecting our backyards with the green spaces in the neighborhoods and improving the livability for the whole thing, our goal is that we're out there every week dedicated to our personal gardens, and we're hoping that the city would help and have our back on this and help us move forward with this kind of project. That's basically what the Green Links is for, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is AJ LeBeire, and I'm the Lead Liaison for California Relief with the Valley of the Moon Garden Club. And there, I represent the next generation of voices when it comes to green technology and innovation. I grew up in Sonoma and attended Sonoma Valley High School, and I currently study computer science and psychology at Sonoma State University. I'm excited to be here to contribute to the conversation about what makes Sonoma a great place to live. I'm here tonight because I want to see Sonoma embrace a future where green technology and innovation play a key role. I'm passionate about ensuring the next generation has opportunities, especially high-paying jobs in tech and green innovation, right here in Sonoma. I'm here to support integrating green and blue infrastructure and green raised into Sonoma's general plan. And this isn't just about adding more trees. It's about creating opportunities for the future, because green technology is the future. And by positioning Sonoma as a leader in sustainability and technology, we can build a town where young people want to stay and thrive. Better green infrastructure means better jobs, stronger communities, healthier environment, and green spaces improve livability by creating healthier, vibrant areas where people can relax and then connect with nature, in addition to enhancing mental well-being and promoting physical activity. So as someone who's grown up here and stayed in Sonoma, I know firsthand that young people want opportunities. We shouldn't have to leave to find good jobs, especially in tech and sustainability. I want to see Sonoma become a hub for innovation where young people like me can build careers and contribute to a city that values both sustainability and technology. And that's what I'm here to fight for. To achieve this, we need to keep the environment intact and make Sonoma a place where people want to stay. So we need a strong, sustainable foundation for the future of our community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Callie, and this is Curtis. We're the Speaker Seekers for the Valley of the Moon Garden Club, and we're here to represent the next generation of environmentally conscious people who care about the future of Sonoma. Curtis works for Jack London State Historic Park, and I work for the Sonoma State University as the Preserves Manager for the Center for Environmental Inquiry. We both share a passion and a passion for sustainability and community, and we're excited to be part of this conversation. We're asking that the city include green and blue infrastructure in the general plan as a priority. We're here tonight because we want to see Sonoma continue to build a future where environmental sustainability, green infrastructure, and community connection are all priorities. We believe that building a community with walkable neighborhoods, public green spaces, and environmental stewardship will attract people who care about the same values as we do. In fact, I know it well, because I'm one of those transplants that came for that exact reason. And I have a number of friends that live throughout the United States that lack that in their communities and are looking for something just like this. With the rise of remote work, we want Sonoma to be a place where young people can live, work, and thrive without having to leave.
I grew up here, and my mom is a teacher at Altamira. She leads the garden there and is constantly trying to engage a younger generation in green infrastructure. This isn't just about conserving nature. It's about creating a community that future generations can call home. We want to see Sonoma grow as a place where people prioritize their environment, have access to compact, energy-efficient housing, and enjoy the benefits of a healthy, sustainable lifestyle. Green infrastructure and urban forests are key to making this a reality, and we see this as a future of Sonoma.
As a young couple who could live anywhere, literally, we live in an RV, we choose to stay in Sonoma because we love the community, the connection to nature, and the opportunities for sustainability here. We believe that by investing in green infrastructure and building a community where people want to be, Sonoma can continue to thrive for future generations. We don't need big houses or to move far away for good jobs. We want what's right here, and that's what we're fighting for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Larson. I live at 80 Creek Lane, and I've been there for the last 15 years. I'm the Executive Director of the Village of Sonoma Valley, a local nonprofit organization dedicated to helping older adults and people with disabilities age better in their homes. I'm also the Representative for Susan Goran and District 1 on the Aging and Disability Commission for Sonoma County. I also am on the implementation for the Master Plan for Aging Committee for the county. I serve as the LADAP Steering Committee for the county, and I'm also, I serve on the Board of Directors for the State Village Movement of California. Tonight, I want to discuss the importance of open and connected green spaces in Sonoma for aging in place and to advocate for developing a strategic plan for creating these green spaces to be included into the city's general plan. More than 30% of Sonoma's population is over 65, and that number continues to grow. At the same time, according to a 2023 study from the Nork Institute at the University of Chicago, more and more older adults will face financial insecurity in their later years, which statistically leads to increased isolation and a general decline in health. The Village of Sonoma Valley is working to mitigate these trends. You may know that the City Council recently provided a letter of support to the California Department of Social Services for a Local Aging and Disability Action Plan Grant. I spearheaded in partnership with Sonoma County Aging Area Agency on Aging. We were awarded a $200,000 grant to create a plan to improve the quality of life for older adults in Sonoma Valley and Santa Rosa. Work on developing the plan is currently underway, with findings from the focus groups and surveys expected in mid-2025. One of the issues we have discovered so far is a shortage of equitable housing that promotes, specifically, that promotes socialization and builds community. Over the next 20 years, more and more people will need to age in their own home. There simply aren't enough affordable options other than staying in your own home. Open and connected green spaces are essential to the successful aging in place. They provide opportunities for physical activity, social interaction, and mental well-being at low cost to the users. Walking trails, parks, and community gardens encourage physical activity and promote overall health and wellness. These spaces also foster a sense of community by providing a place for residents to gather, socialize, and build relationships. As many of you may know, AARP has an age-friendly designation, and they recognize communities that are committed to providing a livable and inclusive environment for people of all ages and abilities. Open green spaces play a crucial role in creating such an environment and re... such an environment and represent one of the eight tenants of the AARP age-friendly designation. Many of the municipalities in Sonoma County have already received this age-friendly designation, as has Sonoma County and the state of California. Creating a strategic plan for open and connected green space development is a huge step towards age-friendly designation for Sonoma and an opportunity and support of, to support older adults in our community. In conclusion, green spaces are a vital component of an age-friendly community. By prioritizing these spaces and working towards AARP's age-friendly designation, Sonoma can demonstrate its commitment to creating an inclusive and supportive environment for residents of all ages and abilities. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kelsey Maddox. I'm here as an advocate for the Green Initiative and I'm a long-term resident of Sonoma. For over a decade, I manage senior retirement and care communities and in recent years, I have been an advocate for a spectrum of older adult issues. As you can see, I am an older active adult. Like many older adults, walking is my primary means for maintaining my health. I live in an area of town west of Fifth Street West where there is most likely the largest concentration of older adults in our city housed in independent living, excuse me, housed, housed in independent housing, retirement communities, and care facilities. However, the area in which I live is not conducive for walking without crossing the heavily congested corridor of Fifth Street West. Existing walk pa, walking paths do not connect or simply do, go nowhere. We also do not have a public outdoor spaces west of Broadway in which to meet others or to enjoy nature. The plaza is our only nearest park, which requires a pedestrian to cross numerous streets and unsafe intersections to get there. Or, it unfortunately means, getting into a car where parking is a growing issue, especially on Fridays and Saturday, Fridays through Sundays. And what about those who can no longer drive or walk long distances? Are they simply limited to their homes? Isolation for seniors is a significant issue and has a major impact on aging. Getting older adults out of their homes promotes not only health, but more importantly, is a factor to being a part of a community and, and fosters a greater sense of belonging. Pathways and parks are where we meet others to be seen and to observe life in its many forms and ages. I also support the green and blue infrastructure addition to our general plan as being beneficial to the economic future of our city. Is our view of the future limited only to the wine industry to draw others to experiencing Sonoma? Where does the role of civic beauty and the importance of being in nature play in the attracting others to, in attracting others to our city? Sonoma will be more beautiful and desirable for guests if we live an established plan to enhance it. Visitors will also have the enhanced benefits by their stay through the access to interconnected pathways and parks, excuse me, I apologize, to experience the rich and historic culture by foot or by bicycle. The enhancement to quality of life, the advancement of well-being, the increased opportunity to bond with others, no matter what the age, are just a few of the numerous benefits of adding a green and blue infrastructure layer to our general plan. I strongly urge you to say yes to this important opportunity for everyone today and for the future of a community in being foresighted to adapt it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ted Pender. I am a resident of Sonoma for almost five years now. I live at 17501 Highlands Boulevard in the Springs. And I am representing the Springs here at this meeting, hoping for a county link to our city's green link, which I think can be a seamless thing if it's done correctly. And my main actual gripe is the lack of shade on Sonoma sidewalks. I walk, drive, and ride my bike up and down Highway 12 in the Springs every day. And all of you have experienced the heat of this valley, especially with our increasing heat waves we've been enduring. I don't want to walk on those sidewalks. There's no shade. I see people, they're pretty barren throughout the summer because people don't want to walk without, without the shade protecting them. We're all suffering from skin cancers. We have the warming climate to deal with. Trees reduce the temperature vastly. Not just for residents either. In the Springs, we have a hotel and there's a lot of tourists who go up and down, walking, up and down Highway 12, going to the various very good restaurants. And I think it would benefit not only the residents but the tourists. It would attract more tourists, hence a better economy. To have Highway 12 in the Springs, tree-lined, let's get our, our sidewalk shaded so we can all live better and more comfortably. I am the lead with the garden, the Valley of the Moon Garden Club, civic lead on all gardening projects. I work in the Rose Garden. Been working there for over a year now. On Sunday, I have a event that happens at 1:00. We have deadheading followed by 2:00 concert in the amphitheater. It's been a delightful summer. Everyone's been coming and enjoying it. And I plan on continuing that and my other projects. I also manage the garden at the, next door at the Historical Society. So I'm very involved and I do feel that the Springs have been left out of any kind of constructive plan. And I really, excuse me, I'm, I'm really here to advocate for better connections and more links, more trees to link the Springs neighborhood with Sonoma. So that's what I'm fighting for. Thank you.
Hi, Morgan Momson. I live just down the street here. I work at El Verano Elementary School and for the last two days I've ridden my bike. I'm fortunate that I can take the bike trail most of the way. But like this gentleman said, as soon as I get into the Springs area that I'm on the roads. I'm on roads without sidewalks or bike trails. So I fully support the Green Link. I feel healthier and happier and I'm better at my job when I ride my bike to work. And I'm better when I come home after I've ridden home. I would love if everyone who chooses to live in this community and work in this community had that same opportunity. And I think everyone that lives and works in this community deserves it. So I fully support the Green Links project.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Love. I live at 993 Manor Drive and I am a co-president with wonderful Cedra Nathan of Valley Moon Garden Club, which was established in 1951. This club has been quietly working in this valley for a very long time. As you heard from everyone, school gardens, pollinator gardens, I can go on and on, so I won't be redundant. But think about the Springs as we were thinking, as Teddy was just talking about, and our children trying to get to the only high school on Broadway. How are they going to get there? They don't drive. A lot of their families can't even afford a car. How are they going to get there? They need a safe passage. We all need a safe passage. We were, we just heard from some representatives from the senior community. How are they going to get from their homes or from their facility to the hospital? How are they going to get to the drugstores, the grocery stores, libraries? We really, really, really need these green links to go forward. And after hearing from everyone, I of course am here to support and hope that you will help in the 20-year plan. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Wade at 429 La Quinta Lane. And I too am here to support a blue and green infrastructure for the 2044 master plan, uh, general plan. I'm the last speaker from our group, so take a deep breath. We've almost made it. I've been in Sonoma for 24 years. In my working life, I spent all of my time as a collegian, university executive administrator. And I've worked in both private and public institutions. I've served as a leader for institutional strategic planning. I've worked with boards. I've done government regulation work. I've helped design green buildings and I've worked with bond oversight committees. And I really appreciate the work that you do as a commission and the city council. I strive to be a good neighbor. I support local nonprofits. I read the news. I participate in local life. I always vote. And I say these things because I'm certain most of you don't know me. And frankly, no offense, I would rather meet you over a glass of wine or a coffee than here at a city meeting. However, tonight we've coaxed ourselves out of our comfy little homes and our gardens. And we have come out here to demand that the city develop green and blue infrastructure, sustainable elements into the next general plan so that leaders will have a data-driven, integrated way to serve as a guide for current and future leader decision-making. As I said, I read the newspapers and I know that housing issues have been well addressed by Citizen Concerns for the plan. And tonight we ask that you add the same intensity and focus that you have to the housing, to the green and blue infrastructure work. We need a comprehensive, robust vision where people, plants, and habitat safely coexist and people have the space to be outside with the ability to safely cross the city, to use services, to shop, and to participate in civic life. In the 2020 Sonoma General Plan, there was a great deal of emphasis on sustainability. And one of the goals was to not just sustain but improve the tree canopy. And living on the west side of town, I would say in the last five years, we have lost probably 20 mature trees. I don't, haven't seen any data about whether the city has reached its goal of sustaining and improving the tree canopy, but I suspect we haven't reached it. I watch the decisions we make as a community and frankly, we seem to have lost a little bit of our direction. So the 2044 general plan is an opportunity to integrate a green and blue infrastructure and framework. The people who've spoken tonight represent a cross-section of our community, a variety of ages, and diverse work experiences in healthcare, elder care, academics, corporation, and the arts. And we all agree that it's important to align our city efforts across arts, the bike and walking paths, safety, tree ordinances, health, and biodiversity. It is a trap to believe that we must have development at any cost or that green and blue infrastructure is counter to an important goals as providing housing and economic growth. There are many examples of cities who are doing better. This is within our grasp as a community. So we're asking you to be agitated, concerned, a little bit angry, as we are, to put into the next general plan, something better. This blue and green infrastructure. And it's important to remember, the best time to plant a tree or to improve a computing, community was 20 years ago. The second best time is today.
Any other comments from the public? Well, thank you for this coordinated effort and the advocacy. It was very well orchestrated and very clear.
I just want to say, we can meet at the plaza, guys, because we have a table there. So if anybody's interested, half-table plaza. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. It's very well coordinated. All right. And with that, we'll move on to item three, the consent calendar. There's one item on the consent calendar and that's to receive the minutes from the special planning commission meeting on August 22. So I'll ask the commissioners if you have any other comments on those minutes?
I'm abstaining as I was absent.
Right, hearing none. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner, never mind. Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wierich?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donbach?
Yes.
Youth Member Miller?
Yes.
The motion passes for, 4013.
All right. Moving right along, we'll head to item 4.1, the public hearing, which is the consideration discussion of possible action to adopt a resolution approving the application for a conditional use permit amendment of Jason Weaver on behalf of Sonoma Valley Hospital to expand existing services within Suite B into Suite C within the commercial building located at 19312 Sonoma Highway. Before we start, I'll ask the commissioners if they've had any ex parte communication for this project. And I'm seeing none. So hand it over to Diane. Welcome.
Thank you. That was my first piece of information. I just wanted to say hello. I'm Diane Levine, the new, one of the new assistant or associate planners here. I'm happy to be here and I hope to get to know you guys and serve the community. So the item before you this evening is for Sonoma Valley Hospital to amend their existing conditional use permit that allows for physical therapy services within Suite B of 19312 Sonoma Highway to expand into Suite C. The project location is in one of two multi-commercial buildings on a 2.31 acre lot. The prominent business was, within the front commercial building is where Sonoma, Sonoma Fit is. And in the rear building is where Sonoma Valley Hospital leases two suites, which is Suite B and Suite C. There's also a optometry office in that rear commercial building. Suite C currently has an allowable use for a medical office and the amendment before you would allow the medical services to expand into Suite C, which is also allowed under the commercial zoning designation, designation district and within the West Napa-Sonoma corridor. So this is the project site. Suite B currently operates about halfway from the front elevation to a little over halfway, halfway on the southern side of the building. And then there is an entrance, a hallway entrance. And then Suite C begins on the shorter stretch of the southern portion of the building. The building was constructed in 1966, so there's not a historical component. And there are no exterior alterations proposed as part of this project, so we won't be getting into building materials and such. So the proposed project is to amend the existing use permit just to authorize services to expand from Suite B to Suite C. The nonstructural alterations include removal of existing modular workstations within the office that you are probably pretty aware of, the modular stations. It doesn't take much to remove those, as well as a division of what, the existing conference room into two rooms so they can both function as physical therapy exam rooms. And where the modular workstations would be removed is to allow for a physical therapy exercise area. Improvements also include duct replacement, just electrical and plumbing related to sort of modernizing and coming up to code from the building aspect. There also may be an extent of restriping accessible parking stalls and the circulation aisles where, where they see fit and where it's needed. Oh, let me just point out. So, let's see. Okay, so you have the existing space is the, oh, sorry, it's one screen. There we go. There we go. Okay, so here's the proposed plan. The green highlighted indicates the existing space, and the blue highlighting further delineates the scope of Suite C. Stated in the staff report, Suite C would allow for approximately just over 4,000 square feet, about 4,080 square feet. And the entitlement would simply allow for the existing conforming use within Suite B to expand into Suite C. Elements that staff would look at in a use permit amendment as far as an expansion of use, we would look at things like employee counts, visitor counts, parking requirements, things that would create an intensity that might be felt in a manner of, a matter of different impacts. And as also mentioned in the staff report, these changes or the amendment before you would have none or nominal effects to that. So we don't see an issue with it. The city's municipal code, section 19.48.040, indicates parking requirements, which for this building and this use is one space per 500 square feet. So that's the calculation. And then for medical offices, it's the same conversion for the parking. So essentially, the parking requirements are already met. Oh, and to add further, there was no conditions within the existing use permit that would need to be amended in order to approve this outside of just expanding it into Suite C. So surrounding zoning includes commercial and public facilities to the north, housing opportunity to the south, single-family low-density to the east, and commercial to the west. And staff recommends adopting this resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions?
Is Suite C currently occupied by anyone?
Yeah, so it's occupied by Sonoma Valley Hospital, the same group, and it serves as medical offices, so administration.
Thank you. Any other questions? This time, I'll open it up to the public for any questions. Pardon me? The applicant, pardon me. Is the applicant here? Yep, come on up.
No questions at this time. I appreciate the opportunity to have you guys review this application.
Yeah, introduce yourself, thank you.
My name's Jason Weaver. I'm an architect, principal architect at Fort Two Seven Architecture. We are the agent for Sonoma Valley Hospital on this project.
Any questions from the applicant? Okay, thank you. And now we will open it up to public comment, if there's any, on this particular topic. Seeing none, we'll close that public comment. Are there any other comments from the commission regarding this?
I make a motion. Other than the fact that this represents something that Commissioner Nugent and I will discuss tomorrow, as whether or not this is an appropriate type of application to be handled differently than in a formal application before a commission. That's the extent of my comments.
We look forward to the hearing about that. So do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve this resolution, approving the applications for the conditional use permit amendment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nugent.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Willers.
Yes.
Commissioner Wyrick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donbok.
Yes.
Youth Member Miller.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, we need more PTs.
All right, and with this, we'll move on to item 4.2, which is discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a variance and design review application for exterior modifications and expansion to the existing single-family residence adding 420 square feet and a portico located at 455 East Walnut Street.
Prior to this, I will be recusing myself from this item due to proximity.
And any of the remaining commissioners have any ex parte communication with the applicant? Seeing none, I will hand it over to Diane.
I'll stay short on the intro on that one because you had a mouthful in the title. So yeah, this is for a design review and a variance at 455 East Walnut Street. So the project location is 455 East Walnut Street. The parcel is 6,500 square feet within the low-density residential zoning district, is in the central east planning area, and is within the historic overlay district, although the site and home is not eligible as a historic resource. The lot contains an existing 2,573 square foot two-story home. As discussed in the staff report, the lot is 1,000 square feet less than the minimum lot size standard. When the minimum lot size was implemented, it created the parcel to become legal nonconforming, as well as one of the side setbacks. They meet the total setback requirement, but one of the sides is just, it's too, it became two feet short. And it also created a legal nonconformity with the FAR that was existing. It is because of the lot size and the FAR requirements that this item is before you as a variance. So the applicant is seeking the addition of a portico to the east elevation, which is the side where the front door is. The portico would create a walkway from the front elevation that leads to the front door. The proposed project also includes a 420 square foot addition. The addition upstairs would allow for an additional bedroom, bath, laundry area, and office. And below, it's approximately 87 square feet, which sits on the side of the garage and below the addition. Design materials, so the roof would be replaced in kind, which is an asphalt composition. And portions of the historical, the horizontal lap siding would be replaced with vertical woodboard and battened siding in a charcoal color. Portions of the horizontal lap siding would also be replaced with a white cement plaster siding. And the trim would be in charcoal. New gutters and downspouts would be in copper. And the traditional garage doors, which I can show you in this slide, would be replaced with a diagonal wood siding, which you'll see in the elevations. So here is a site plan which shows the proposed additions outlined in red. And the walkway portico is approximately 100 square feet, about 107. There are no significant changes to the home's existing footprint. On the first floor, there would be that bump out, which is in red, for the storage area. And on the second floor, you, oh, that's actually on the next slide. So you can also see the porch extension here from the east elevation to the front elevation. Here's the second-story addition, which is partially over the existing garage. You can also see the portico here. And here are some side-by-sides of the existing and the proposed. You can get a visual of the additions and the material changes and the articulation created. You can also see the roof pitches would be maintained, but that the existing hip roof from the garage with the gablet on the garage would be changed to a gable roof. This is the east elevation, and which also functions where the front entrance is. Just further details the portico. You can see the extension from the very small covered front porch that is existing and how that is carried through to the front elevation. And there's not a lot of visibility here from the public right away on either side. It's quite limited, more so on the west elevation. And here is the rear, not much is changing here other than going from that horizontal lap siding to the white cement plaster siding. So here is the east elevation. You can see an access door is, would be added to the garage. That's because there, yeah, so you have the side access to the garage, and then you can see the second-story addition there as well. And here is the development standards conformance table. As you're aware, this item has both designer and a variance component. This table was provided in the staff report, and all design standards are met outside of the legal, legal nonconformities, which again are the smaller-than-minimum lot size, one of the side setbacks, and the FAR. So applicable findings needed for the approval of this project as a whole are the design review findings, historic overlay findings, and of course, the variance findings. All design review findings are met outside of the variance. I'm sorry, yeah, the design review findings are met outside of the variance that's being requested. And the project doesn't impact anything in relation to the historic overlay or historic resources. There's no adjacent historic resources, so I didn't put those up here. They were covered in the staff report, but it's pretty much not applicable. And as you're all aware, the commission may grant the variance so as long as, because of special circumstances applicable to the property, the strict application of the code denies the property owners the privilege enjoyed by others that are within the same zoning district and within the same vicinity. And all the findings can be made. The findings were included in the resolution. And within, summarized within the staff report was the discussion that the 1,000 square foot difference in the minimum lot size, because a majority of the parcels around the property are much larger than that, that the strict application of FAR does impact, limit really this owner to the ability to enjoy the parcel as much as other parcels in the vicinity. Additionally, there were a couple of other projects that were found to have similar circumstances where variances were granted to allow for habitable space beyond the allowable FAR. Those examples, one is 348 Patton Street, which was allowed to exceed the .35 FAR nearly by the same square footage. They were at just over 450 square feet. And then another one was 726 Elda Court, where a variance was granted mainly or in part because of the minimum lot size not being met. So staff is recommending approval of the variance and design review for this project, and I'm happy to take any questions or have the applicant come up, should they wish.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for Diane? And is the applicant present? Would you like to come up?
I have a PowerPoint, if that would be okay. Hi, everyone, my name is Corey Abston. I'm an architect in Sonoma, and I've worked for Robert Bauman for the last 11 years. And I'm here on behalf of Renato Alui and Patrick Bay to present for the variance. I didn't realize that the staff was going to be so clear on all of the explanation for the project, so thank you for that. So I'm going to take a lot less time than I thought on my slides. So if we could move to the first one. This is just a map of Sonoma. You can see Broadway running up and down and West Napa Street running left and right. And I've circled their East Walnut Street and the area around it that we've focused on. And if you could go on to the next one. This is the assessor's parcel map. So when we started looking into this, I had talked with the planning department, and I was asked if we were proposing something that's inconsistent with the neighborhood. So I was thinking, what can we use as a sample of the neighborhood? And the assessor's parcel map kind of conveniently places all the parcels together like this for us. And that is what I used to kind of evaluate the property sizes around and to find that the majority of the properties would be able to do the project that we're proposing. And that was going to be pretty much the findings that we were asking for. And towards the end, we started researching the past approvals, which we found 348 Patton Street, which happened to be on the sample that we were looking at. So I thought that was a particularly strong point, that this, that FAR increase was approved nearby in the same zoning district. You can move on to the next one. We've seen the plans are already here, I think, a more clear version of it than I have here, and what the addition, the additions are. I was going to kind of briefly point out generally what we're doing. And if we can move on to the next one. Again, we see the elevations. The one on the bottom there is the one that's going to be the most visible. And I think that the form is consistent with Sonoma's style, with the traditional gables. We added that entry portico, kind of gives it a better sense of entry. And we are replacing the siding materials kind of to bring it up to date. And the windows, the windows in the back are going to remain existing, but the front windows, which you see from the street, will be new. If you go on to the next slide, this is the concept image that we started with. And I thought, this is really what I wanted to show you guys, so you can have kind of a picture of what we were going for when we started with this. So that's kind of the charcoal siding that we were looking at. It's going to be a white stucco with copper gutters and downspouts. And I think it's, I think it's a charming design. I also think that the staff did an excellent job on the report, and so thank you for that. And also, I'm here, I can answer any questions that you guys might have as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll offer. Come on up.
So I'm in Atalui, and together with my husband, Patrick Bay, we own 455 East Walnut Street. Sonoma is where my husband actually grew up and where we chose to raise our growing family four years ago, close to his parents that have been Sonoma residents for 40 years. With a new baby arriving soon, this modest expansion is essential for our family and allows my own family that lives abroad to actually come and comfortably stay with us. This has been a long-held plan based on our vision and goal of raising our children in Sonoma, and a vision and goal that we have shared and gained support from our neighbors over the past four years. They understand our needs, and they have signed in support of our requests, which I have here with me today. The opportunity to expand our house and our home actually means more than just a physical space. It signifies a commitment to our family's future and a belief in the dreams that we have nurtured. We are grateful for your review, and we look forward to the possibility of turning our vision into reality. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments from the public at this time?
Renato, do we have a copy of those comments from the neighbors? I didn't see anything in our file.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't submit it because I was getting signatures up to the last minute.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments of the commission? Does anyone make a motion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Okay, thank you.
It's in relationship to the idea of an FAR and lot size. Because I, while I'm compelled to approve the variance on this project, I'm not compelled by the argument that because the lot size is smaller than other lots. I, I'm not compelled by the argument that because the lot size is smaller than other lots in the neighborhood, that that's a reason that we should grant a variance for the FAR. Because the concept of an FAR is to keep a building within its basic form and mass relative to its lot size. So the reason for an FAR is to keep a building small on a small lot and allow buildings to be bigger on a bigger lot. So the concept that we should be granting variances because someone has a small lot to FAR is because their neighbor has a bigger lot is contrary to the whole idea of an FAR. I'm torn on this project from the very beginning. I, I don't think that there's any issue with the amount of square footage that they're looking to add to the building. The way in which the scale of the building is broken down by the way in which they've added that square footage helps with the increased mass of the building. The building will in the future, if the FAR is retained relative to large lot size, will be a more massive building that will be allowed on other properties that are only 6,500 square feet. So that's the discussion. Currently, it's in our development code that we have an FAR. That's the reason it's there. It's not a compelling reason for me to grant the variance. But I'm willing to grant the variance as, as an, almost as an exception in this case because of the way in which the massing, the additional massing is handled on the property. So I, I just wanted to make it clear that, that this is, and, and the idea that this has been done on other properties isn't compelling to me either. Because those are individual cases with individual properties. So I just wanted to raise that as an issue to the commission as well as the staff. You know, the FAR is the FAR. It, it is called a floor area ratio for that specific reason. And that is that there is a side area and there is an allowed amount of square footage for that side area within our general plan and development code. And until we change that, if we do, that's, those are the rules. And, and whether or not this was a grandfathered exception because of the original house exceeded the lot area before the FAR was implemented, again, isn't really a compelling argument to me. So I'm willing to grant the exception or, or go along with granting the exception. And certainly I have no issues with the design review aspects of the project.
I'd like to see the letters, please.
Just to add, it's not letters. I actually shared with them the entire project. I showed them all the elevations as well, aside from them knowing that we wanted to do this since we moved in. And I asked for everyone's signature, so you'll see every signature from the neighbors in the street.
I really appreciate that you did that, Renato. Thank you. Whenever we are asked to grant a variance, the first thing I always ask is, what do the neighbors say? Because they have to live with it too. I really liked the design, Corey. I think that the fact that you used the existing footprint and went up, you did an excellent job there. The massing is a lot bigger than what's going to be typical on East Walnut. The fact that you've reached out and communicated with your neighbors. I know a lot of those neighbors. I recognize their names. I appreciate that you did that. That's everything. And that's, the fact that you've done that and you've gone about this in such an empathetic way makes me very favorable for granting this.
If there are no further comments, may I ask for a motion?
I move, I move that we approve the variance and design review permit at 455 East Walnut Street, including action to approve a categorical exemption presented to the CQ. Subject to findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Youth member Miller?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously?
All right, thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to item 4.3 is the consideration discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution approving the application of a design review and variance to allow new exterior lighting that exceeds the allowed foot candles located at 525 West Spain. So I'll ask again the commissioners if they've had any ex parte communication with the applicants?
We're gonna, Matt's coming.
Yes. All right. And I'll let you all take it away.
All right. So Jennifer Gates, Community Development Director. Thank you, Vice Chair Donbok and Commissioners. So as stated, the project, there's two in a row. We have some parking lot lighting. And this is one of the topics that the commission is going to be taking on and having an ad hoc committee about. In the meantime though, we did have these two proposals that came forward and requesting variances for that lighting. And if you had a chance to look at our current lighting code, we really are focusing on foot candles when there's a lot more that goes into, to lighting that we'll get into in the future, in a future code. But I will touch on some of it as we go through this project. So the first project is here at 252 West Spain. So zoning wise, it is residential low. It is in our historic overlay. And as we know, that it's completely surrounded by the Vallejo State Park, except for one little small portion. But this is for the first congregational church, the congregation shalom and the old Adobe School are all located on this site. And it's around almost three acres. So again, here's the entrance. This is what we see from West Spain. So safety and security are important and necessary for this property. The parking lot is located along the side and to the rear of the site, which includes multiple buildings and as well as the daycare center that is used all day and into the night as well. So the proposal is to update that building lighting and install the new parking lot lighting. The proposed lighting includes replacing five mounted fixtures that include walls and poles. I didn't have that correction. I thought they were all on walls, walls. But when I went out to the site, I noticed that a couple extend beyond the roof. And so those would be replaced as part of this project. And then there will be new eight, there'll be eight altogether, 10-foot poles with either one or two mounted fixtures on each pole. So all the proposed new fixtures will be 3,000 Kelvin. So it won't be the white light, which is what you see around at 5,000 Kelvin. So that is something that I've worked with both applicants on is just to make sure that we're reducing that brightness. They all new parking lot lights and what you see today, majority have an internal screening in them. And so it directs the light itself and trying to make sure it's directed down. And this also helps to limit spillage beyond our project boundaries. So the applicant did provide this photometric plan identifying the foot candles and light spread for the site. However, a variance is still needed to exceed the allowed foot candles for the intensity of the lighting at the base of the actual light pole. So it cannot exceed more than five foot candles at the base is the way our code reads. By the photometric plan that you looked at, that was in your packet, none of the foot candles exceed beyond the property line. They did provide an additional image showing what that perspective would look like and what that luminance would be. This is the proposed light and what it would look like. It's the same for the light poles as it would be for what would be on the building itself too. So it showed in the plan set, a bracket. And then also there is a 10-foot pole. So as far as the height goes, for the poles, they shouldn't be any taller than 15 feet. And the ones that are being proposed as new would be 10 feet tall. The parking lot, again, it can be no less than two or more than five foot candles at the base of a fixture. And then also for building mounted lights, it shall not exceed five foot candles, five feet from the light source. So in those cases, that does not apply, does not comply with this proposed project. And the lighting schedule, the light shall have timers that reduce the turn off of the light fixture, fixtures when businesses are closed. This project will comply with this and the hours of the, the lighting will be no later than 10:00 PM. There is shielding that is built in again to the light fixture. As for what an individual would be able to see from five feet or more away in the sense of glare from the fixture itself is still to be determined of what that would look like. I have looked at products, trying to see about proposed shielding that we would see in older products that can help with the glare. Somebody may bring up, it was in one of the letters too, is on this, when we installed new lighting here as well, I asked, because we had some complaints, can we get shields? And nothing allowed, had a shield product that went with it. And so that's become kind of a different treatment now. They build them in. So it's something I'm still looking into a little bit more and that we'll look into, I think, with our ad hoc committee. And then for design review, parking lots do require design review. And so this would have new poles and fixtures. The colors that they chose was to blend in with the trees in the background behind on the, on the, they're located both within the courtyard as well as on the perimeter on the back end of the parking lot. There were comments that were provided to the planning commission in regards to concerns on the lighting themselves. Because this is all new lighting in an area that's pretty dark. Hence the reason why the request for the lights in the parking lot. And so I did want to just show you where the majority of those letters were coming from, were the condos that are to the east of that parking lot. And then that's the view from the parking lot looking towards those properties. So staff believes that commission may approve the request for the variance based on the findings that are provided in the attached resolution. If the planning commission determines that the findings can be met for the variance, then staff recommends approving the application for design review and the variance, including the categorical exemption, class one for existing facilities based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval that were attached to the staff report. And that concludes staff's report. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions?
I have a question. In your communication with the applicant, was there, maybe this is me being naive, not knowing how the lighting works and what's available on the market, whatever. But is there a reason why the intensity of their lighting that they want can't be compliant?
So when, I think this is probably a good image. So when we talk about foot candles, that is the calculation of basically the luminance or the intensity of light. It's taken historically after literally a candle and how it lights foot. It's very literal. And so in this image that you see here, if you think about five foot candles and then think of how it spreads on a site and then you space the light out and then think of a reduction of that, you may then cause more poles. So it's kind of a give and take. And at 10 feet tall and then that intensity. So in some cases, we have two lights that are going to overlap and you're going to have that increase as well from the foot candles as they spread. I am not a lighting engineer. That is definitely not my focus. And so with this applicant, I did, you know, our goal was try to get as close as possible, but also make sure that there's nothing spreading outside of your property. Because we don't want spillage over as well.
Okay, so it's not just a matter of getting a light that's not as bright? Or it could be?
It's part of it. There, it's, it's more than just that. It's, there's lots of, when we start talking about lighting, we're going to start talking about the actual temperature, which we talked about today was the 3,000 Kelvin. What does that mean for a light? It's yellow, you know, yellow to white. We're going to talk about luminants. So how many lumens are actually in the light? So when you look at the products, you'll see all these different measurements. And those are the, the product characteristics that we'll set standards around.
Okay. So is there like an accepted best practice as it relates to coverage from, from lighting or how much lighting an area, a prescribed area should be covered by? Or is there, is there any sort of rules around that?
So the city has adopted this specifically. When we start talking about night sky and other things around that, we'll probably look to specific aspects of parking lot design and lighting versus an entrance to a building, which we do have in the foot candle world, but there's other components. So I think right now, we're basing it off of the code that we have. And so until we identify what we want to do moving forward, this is what we have proposed. And the applicant may have their engineer. I know that, I think the engineer for the second, the next project is on potentially as well. So it may be a question for the applicant's engineer if they're here.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think what I'm getting at is, does what our code mandate diverge greatly from what would be an accepted industry best practice for lighting? It's a hard question, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I don't know what specifically it is for parking lots, but I do also know that it does come into play with age and your site, right? So if you're.
Lot of variables.
There's a lot going on. And so there are best practices around who's using it, what's it for, things like that. So just as an example, in the past, I did a baseball field. And that baseball field, the goal was around 40.
Right.
Foot candles at the, at the triangle. So at the, in the diamond. So I was directing light and we're trying to work on that.
Right.
So depends on what they use.
Right. So yeah, I'm familiar with the crime prevention through environmental design concepts, right? That call for lighting as an element of reducing or preventing crime. And I, you know, I know that it probably varies from use to use, like we're talking about. If, and many times I think this complex is not used very much at night. I know that they are occasionally, but I would say that the majority of their traffic happens during daylight hours. So just trying to put that all together.
I think during daylight hours. And then we have to remember that now we're getting into winter.
Right.
And so our times have changed.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, my question is related to the hours of operation. There was a mention of a 10:00 PM shut off, but do we have, two things. First of all, do we have hard and fast rules on that? I know this property can be used sometimes for other events like the film festival. And what kind of compliance do we have to make sure that that's enforced?
So we will require a timer on, installed on the fixtures themselves. We, as far as enforcement, we are on a complaint-based enforcement. I can ask for the timers and we make sure that it's in the building permit itself. And then it's just a matter of if it runs over. The time in the code itself specifically highlights when nightlife is active. And specifically, I want to say it was 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM would be, so in the reverse, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, they would be off. And so at 6:00 AM, it would go on. So that's what the time is in the code itself. But we would look to the applicant to say, my business is only from here to here. And that's what the timer would be set on. They do do events. They do use the hall for different events. They do do events, um, they do use the hall um for different events. I, the Valley of the Moon group that was out here, I did a presentation to them at night um in the hall. Um, and then the daycare um is also active, so in the mornings.
Question. Do we have any comparable parking lots comparable to this project? That we can review, look at, see how they're, any, like is a school, um, professional building, I don't know, other churches?
Um, I'd have to look for other churches. I think this is kind of unique in the sense that it's all brand new, and we're talking about new lights. Um, the old tungsten lights and the other lights that we have on some of these sites aren't comparable. Um, you know, the one, the next project, we're talking about an old light system that we don't, and those type of lights, we don't have really anymore, so it's not apples to apples in that sense. Um, I won't, I was trying to actually look up for specific parking lots. I see bills reaching forward, so I don't know if you remember a specific parking lot other than-
The closest example, and it's hard to say without the photometrics of it, but the closest example is the new affordable housing project on Broadway. So as you drive by, as you drive by that parking lot at night, it's a different animal than the remainder of our town. And it's one of the issues that I, in the ad hoc that I'd like to address.
I, I have a question about the um, the intent between, the intent for the five foot candles. It's kinda gets to Matt's question. Um, do we know why five was chosen versus, I mean, I looked at this graphic, and I think, and what I understand is that, as you said, there's zero foot candles that go off the property, but it goes up to eighteen foot candles or nineteen foot candles on, so that's like eighteen square feet of coverage on the parking lot for each. Um, so I'm just curious um if we know where the five foot candle designation came from.
I do not.
I have another question, how far off is the ad hoc from coming to this resolution? I mean, to not hold up this project, but to also wonder if, if we need to coordinate this a little more with the um, the folks designing the lighting? I mean, it's eighteen, but um to the point, if, if it were twelve and there were additional poles, would that alleviate the problem, or is it just the type of light that's being let out that people will see on the parking lot?
I would request that if that engineer is here for this project, that they can respond.
So let's go there.
If I, if I might, um, on behalf of the applicant, good evening. My name is Mark Hummel, I'm a Sonoma Valley resident. My name is Mark Hummel, I'm a Sonoma Valley resident. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Congregation Sheer Shalom. I happen to be a licensed architect. I'm not a lighting engineer, but I am familiar with some of the standards. I hadn't realized I might have the opportunity to put a slide on the screen. If you would give me one moment, I'll go back to an old fashioned poster board, and if you would um so allow, give a little context and talk about the reason why things are the way they are on our campus, if that's acceptable.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So um Mr. Hummel represents the um congregation. Thomas um is the engineer that submitted the application.
Tom is our electrical contractor. I apologize to those behind me that you can't see this right now. Um, just a bit of context, I'll try to be brief. So you see the First Congregational Church, Old Adelby Congregation Shalom Campus, surrounded by the Vallejo Fields, uh, with the residential neighbors around the Parks District to the side. Absolutely, thank you. Um, the parking lot was laid out when the church was moved from where the Shell station is on Broadway to this location in nineteen sixty-one. The parking lot dates from nineteen sixty-one. The parking lot was never designed to accept lighting. The parking lot was never designed for lighting. It's an odd shape, there's too much space down the middle, and all the parking lots are sort of just tucked along the, the edges. And so we would, more than anything, wanna be able to fully comply with the ordinance that says foot candle level should be between two and five on the surface of a parking lot. And yet, we have a parking lot here that was never laid out in a rational, right angled, row by row manner, where we can put a light post every so many feet, thirty-six feet, thirty-two feet, in order to achieve even lighting across the parking lot. So we're sort of stuck with, working with what we've got. That parking lot is pitch dark in the wintertime. We leave our services on Friday evenings as well as Saturday mornings. There are other activities in Burlingame Hall in the evenings, the light out late. Folks walk through the middle of campus to the back lot. It is dark back there. We have folks in walkers, folks with canes. Both congregations are elderly, and we have a preschool with pickup around four thirty to five in the evenings, in the winter when it's dark out. We can certainly understand some concerns over here around lighting. At about the upper third of the block, you start to begin to have views over into, into the parking lot, a little bit in an angle from the south. A couple of the comments referenced existing lighting. So we're not touching existing lighting along the eve of the East Classroom Building. Um, the lighting levels in the parking lot, what we retrofit on the buildings, stay for the most part within the foot candle requirements. We've got one hotspot, about one foot candle, one point three foot candle high over on one corner. Um, the, the new fixtures, uh, as, and I wanna thank staff for all the work they did putting together the presentation, I, I really do support, appreciate the support that we've had in that respect. There to be commended. Um, could have been as high as fifteen feet, we've got them down at ten. So we're trying to work with what we can and achieve a secure and safe environment. As a member of the board, we have a responsibility to do what we can for safety on our campus. This is an improvement that's been desired for years, for years. And we finally have enough funding together to make this happen for the first time ever. So, um, with that, um, there's a couple of things that we can do with this project. We know um someone up in the upper northern portion of the neighborhood commented on the obtrusiveness of the lighting. Well, on those wings left and right, the light now, the floodlight is mounted on an eight foot mast on top of the, of the roof. So it's sixteen or twenty feet in the air. With the work we're doing, and I talked to Tom about this recently, we can lower those lights some distance and mitigate their obtrusiveness. Um, and with this project moving forward, we can put those lights now on a dawn to dusk timer, uh, sensor. We can put them on a timer so they shut off at ten o'clock. Right now, those lights are on all night long, that would never be approved now if we were coming forward with that. So we're in position to mitigate some of the impacts. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant? All right, I'll open up for public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come up to the microphone.
You wanna go first? Go first.
I'm Carol Campbell, three oh seven West Spain Street, and I looked diagonal at the building and the property, and I came tonight to find out why we would need more light over there. And I understand that it is dark, of course, everywhere. And yes, they probably do need more lighting in the back. If we could keep it low, because I keep thinking that's open space, we have resident red-tailed hawks, coyotes, frogs, woodpeckers, so much wildlife out there that I don't want, I would not be happy to see that they would, if they were gonna be strongly affected. If the light can be low, I would, I would assume that would be fine. I'm not sure why it needs to go off every night. Could we make it only, could, could it be manually turned on on the days they need it? Ten o'clock seems late. I'm out in my front yard a lot in the evenings, and I don't see much activity over there after six thirty or seven. Unless they were to have something going on over there, they wouldn't even need the lights to go till ten o'clock. Um, eight foot seems reasonable. I would be concerned if they would be tall and going any further out into the property. Day, I'm not even sure daycare, yeah, they're out of there usually by five o'clock. So, just that we consider the wildlife and the hours that we really would need the lights on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Wong, I represent uh the Park Villas Homeowners Association, um, this complex here at one five four uh West Spain Street. Um, and uh I think, uh Jennifer, you are good enough to receive emails from a lot of the occupants of these um townhouses uh who basically enjoy a wonderful dark view at night uh across the General Vallejo State Park. Um, and many, and I've lived there for many years, uh, in this unit here actually. Um, and it's wonderful at night. I mean, you can see the stars, hear the animals, all that. Is, is there a way to mitigate the amount of light? You mentioned five foot candles, I've learned a lot about foot candles recently since I got my green notice. Why can't we keep it at five? Why does it have to exceed that? I, I read that it had to exceed, but I, I, I didn't get a clear answer about why. The other question I had was aligned with, uh, what the prior person mentioned, but which was, why can't they be turned on on the nights there's an event? I mean, there's a baseball game, you turn the nights, the lights on, when it's over, you turn them off. Why, why, why ten o'clock every night? Um, and then finally, and, and thank you for letting me speak. Um, the lights, uh, I think there's, there are six lights intended for the back of the parking lot here. Do they need to be ten feet tall? I mean, I, I, I understand the safety concerns and the fact that there, it's been dark there for many years, but my, the, the homeowners association that I represent would, would like to have as minimal other impact as possible. We understand the benefits of uh safety and, you know, that comes with uh more lighting, but if we could do anything we can to keep the lights on when they need to be on uh and as low as possible to allow the foot candles to reach wherever they need to reach, that would be a wonderful, uh, you know, compromise, in my view, which some of the commissioners have, have mentioned. Thanks.
Good evening, uh, my name is Richard Price. I'm a resident of uh Sonoma, I'm also a board member at Congregation Sheer Shalom. Um, I'm also a retired uh urban planner and uh city planning consultant. Um, I'm not an engineer in lighting, but I've dealt with many projects of this type. And so in this particular situation, just from a neighborhood impact point of view, I think there's a couple of things that are important that should be pointed out. First thing is that the lighting levels at the property line are compliant with your ordinance. There's zero, there's no impact from that. The other thing is the, um, the thing that um uh impacts the neighbors most is being able to see the source of the lighting itself, to see the lumens itself. And at this height and the way that the fixture is designed, that will not be seen. So you don't get that visibility of the actual glare um from, uh, from that distance. Also, the, what you have here, as um, as Mr. Hummel explained, is the, the reason why you have these hotspots, those locations on the ground where the intensity exceeds uh five foot candles, is because the light has to spread out over um this distance. And if the, if you, if you either reduce the height of the poles, made it even lower, which is impractical, ten foot is about the minimum you can do, could maybe go to eight foot. Um, you, you would create even uh more glare, um, uh, additional hotspots. So um ten foot is, is, is a very good height in terms of the neighborhood impact. You certainly wouldn't want it any higher, but uh lower, you're just exacerbating the situation. Um, so how does that impact the neighbors? If you're in a second floor residence and you're looking down at the parking lot, the areas where the variance is needed, where those hotspots are on the ground itself. So at the, at the distance where the neighbors are, or if you're looking at it from the street or uh from the pathway behind it, you're not going to see that area of the parking lot where that, uh, those lighting levels uh exceed. If a car happens to be parked there, there may be some glare because um there's some reflection from that lighting. But the area of the variance is actually minimized through the sliding standard, something that uh the electrical engineer and the, and the architect were, worked very hard to mitigate. So I believe that this is reasonable, uh, it adds very little, um, it will have very uh little direct impact. Uh, people who are living at that distance away will not see the light source. It won't be noticed if they're on a second, as I mentioned, if they're in a second floor and they're looking over and can see the parking lot, uh, that area of the parking lot and just those areas at the back of the parking lot uh will be illuminated slightly more than it is. The five foot uh candle standard is a security standard for parking lots at night. It's the level at which people are able to navigate and see where they're going. If you reduce that, then you obviate um the uh safety uh that uh people walking back and forth uh would see. And also there's a security concern, uh, people can be seen in the parking lot uh from the buildings themselves if they fall or if they're in need of assistance. So I, I believe that this is a reasonable plan. I think the variance can be granted because there's not going to be a substantial impact on the neighbors. I certainly understand the concern. Uh, we wanna keep Sonoma uh as dark sky compliant as possible, and I don't believe that this plan is going to do anything to exacerbate the current lighting situation. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kim Pack, and I'm uh at the First Congregational Church, remember there? Um, one thing I, I have noticed since I've been attending that church for the last eight years is it gets very dark in that parking lot. Um, and there, there has been this need for lighting in that parking lot for a very long time. Um, we have, we may not have uh events, you know, big events that happen, you know, with the community involved at Burlingame Hall, but we have our own um events at our church, we have choir rehearsals, we have bell choir rehearsals, and those happen at night, usually, you know, seven o'clock to eight o'clock. Um, we have meetings that are in the evenings. Um, I know the preschool is there at least till five, and a lot of times probably till five thirty. Um, we, we have a um, uh, and I know Sheer Shalom has meetings also on campus. Uh, and, and we talked about wintertime where by five o'clock, it's like really dark. That's pretty early in the day. If you have a meeting that starts at six, I mean, you just, you just need the light. And, and as they were expressing, we have some lights on the building, but it doesn't go out into the parking lot, which is very wide, like they were talking about, it's like, you know, considered- It's like, you know, considerably wider than what is needed. You can make a whole nother line of cars in the middle, which, you know, when we park at the Fourth of July parking, that's, you can put a lot of cars back there. So I'm, we are, our church is very appreciative of Congregation Shire Shalom taking on this project, wanting to get a grant to put this lighting on the property. It means a lot to us that they are our partners and wanting to do this for both of us. So I just want to tell you that, how much we appreciate it and support it.
Armando Zimmerman, and I live at 275 West Spain Street, almost directly across from the church, the parking, et cetera. I came here to be educated because I know nothing about foot candles or whatever. I do want to point out that several years ago, the church at the time, I don't know if they were combined with Shire Shalom or not, but nonetheless, requested an expansion of, via a use permit for the use of that property. And basically what, I should have brought it. What they were, the church actually ended up getting was a nine to nine, nine AM to nine PM kind of at-large ability to use their property, mainly the buildings for meetings and whatnot. So nine AM to nine PM. And at one point, there was even talk about doing it seven days a week. And I believe it was changed at one point based on appeal to limit it to six days a week, including Saturdays. So I would appreciate if you haven't looked at that permit, because somebody mentioned unintended consequences. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm an advocate of looking for unintended consequences. And so for a period of time, that I believe that the church was trying to increase their revenue by looking for groups that would rent the hall in front, I forget the name of it. And so, you don't have anything against churches increasing their ability to remain viable. But on the other hand, tonight I hear the broad-term parking lot. If you're familiar with that property, then you'll see that there's a driveway coming in on the east side, and there's parking that happens there also. Then there's the parking area in the back where the garden is that someone was talking about earlier. And then it comes around, so it's a big, it's a big horseshoe. And then there's parking all the way down from the daycare to the sidewalk on Spain Street. And that parking is on one side, on the left. I'm looking at it from the street, it's on the right side. So what happens in the, at night, not related to this particular project, is that one thing that when there are activities at night, our house gets lit up when people are leaving the parking lot. Now, what am I going to do about that? I'm just pointing it out as an unintended consequence of having more activities at night. And what the baseline is, I don't know, because I don't keep track of it. I did to begin with, and there was an increase of the use of that property and many more activities at night and cars leaving at, you know, up to nine or ten o'clock at night. It lights up our, our living room, which is kind of annoying, I guess. And so I'm, you know, that's, that's a comment to you. Also, I'm looking at the, is this, is this project related to a, to security? Is there, are there security systems there that basically light the place up if there's a break-in into the buildings? Or are, is there any connection between? I understand the safety of people getting in and out of their cars, getting back to their cars when it's dark and that kind of thing. But from the standpoint of break-ins or some of the special security that's been applied lately because of unfortunately, you know, other issues regarding, I guess, the time we live right now. So, I mean, we went, we went to a service there not too long ago, and my wife and I, and there was a, they had hired a guard. Okay, I got it, okay, okay, I've got it. But anyway, at this point, I have no idea of what this, what this lighting would be. The person that was talking about lighting up the, the more natural aspect of the thing with the animals and that kind of stuff, that does concern me also. So I would appreciate that you would take a closer look than just the technicalities of a pole here, a pole here. And will any of these lights be on these driveways also? Because parking lot is what? Okay?
Thank you. Does the applicant want to come back up and reiterate the location of the lights and answer the question? The question was the location of the lights and whether I think they would be on the south side or north side?
No, the only parking lot lights are at the very rear of the property. And that light is largely screened, almost completely screened at night by the grove of trees behind, which you see. I certainly appreciate the concerns around the natural environment. It was for that very reason that Jennifer Gates pointed out to us that we needed to comply with the three thousand, the warmer light, the softer light than the bright whites. It's also part of the reason that we revised the photometric plan at least once to ensure that there's no light spillage off the property. We zero out at the property lines. That was very consciously done. Thank you.
Sir? Would the applicant stay?
Oh, I had a question for the applicants.
Yeah, I have one too.
If at all possible, yeah.
He knows, I'm Jan Chernoff, I'm the president of Shire Shalom.
Okay, thank you.
Technically, Mark knows many more details.
Yes, Commissioner Wyer.
Yeah, so my question involves the lighting scheme. Is there an opportunity or would there be a willingness to consider not an all-or-nothing lighting scheme, but a, some kind of a program where it's preset to where after a certain time it drops down to just the minimum lighting necessary to provide for security versus having everything on or everything off? Is it all or one, all or nothing, or can it be?
Thank you, I appreciate the question. It's a, it's a great question. So these are the kinds of things that were given consideration before we arrived here. We've been working on the planning with the lighting for months now, trying to get it dialed in, so to speak, photometrically. And the question of security lighting levels, so the ordinance for exterior walkways is a standard two-foot candles on walkways, except where there's security lighting at the entrance of a building where three-foot candles is allowed. So there's just sort of a security minimum, three-foot candles. We're just getting light across the parking lot even below those levels at, at the rate or the intensity that we've got now. So it's not all or nothing. We could certainly dial back. At what expense? Compromising safety and security for our congregants, the children, the older folks? We could, you know, we could do that. But it's hard for me to say that I'm willing to do that as a member of the Board of Directors of the congregation. If I think of, right now I have people, the images of people are congregants in my mind who use their walkers to get in and out of the building. So is it all or nothing? It doesn't have to be. But the primary concern here is safety and security. We enjoy the sun, stars, moon rain too. But when you're anxious about whether you can find your car or what's in the bushes, it gets a little hard to enjoy that.
Understood, thank you.
I also have a question for you. You said that currently there's existing lighting that comes off the roof?
Yes.
And it's on twenty, it's on all night?
We believe so. Tom?
I'm just curious how bright that light is, if you, if you have an idea. I mean, is it, is it a shielded light or is it just a beacon?
Well, I think it's the one that Jennifer was speaking to. It is shielded, and yet it's high enough that it's visible from farther away than what is proposed. And so therefore, I had suggested that one of the things that we could look into with this project is lowering them. Those are currently on the building's roof, on top of an eight-foot mast, they're quite high. And the reason they're so high is they're trying to throw light all the way across the parking lot. With lighting at the rear coming from the other direction, I think we have an opportunity to bring those down and mitigate that.
Thank you. Any other, another question?
I do have a question too for the congregations. What is the necessity of keeping the lights on till 10:00 PM seven days a week? Is there flexibility there?
Again, flexibility could be had. The question is, to what extent does that potentially compromise security? So one of the things that we're looking for is to be able to see into the parking lot when there's activity. And we don't always know exactly when activities will occur. There's a schedule of events. Burlingame Hall is also used in the evenings, sometimes in a manner that doesn't occur on a regular basis. And so whereas from a pure security perspective, one might actually like to have those lights on all night long, we're certainly happy to have them turning off at 10:00 PM.
My question would be, is it possible to have them turn off earlier?
Well, it is certainly possible to have them turn off earlier. And yet 10:00 PM is what is allowable under the ordinance.
Well, it's really just a matter of usage on the property, both Burlingame and both of the congregations is, what is the typical schedule for the week? And is it, is it standard that you're going to have activities where you need the lights until 10:00 PM? Or is it something that is probably twice a week?
Excuse me?
Tom, do we have the opportunity to calendar the lighting?
So what you, what you would be asking then is that, Commissioner O'Neil, I think what you're asking is can we have the lights turned off after what we would estimate to be the end of a given activity, so that they didn't stay on until 10:00 PM unless necessary?
Correct.
We can consider that.
I'd just like to mention that when we talk about safety and security, unfortunately, we're also talking about external threats in the case of the Jewish community. We've been forced to hire a guard, we've received threats, there's been distribution of handouts through numerous communities with anti-Semitic sentiment. So we take this element very seriously. We use the campus quite a bit. And we just really think that we're at risk without some sort of intense lighting feature.
Could you state your name one more time for me, please?
I'm Jan, J-A-N Chernoff, C-H-E-R-N-O-F-F.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'll just make a comment. I mean, I think this is a very complex situation, where we're trying to weigh the safety and security and usability of this facility, which often does have night activities. I mean, I appreciate the work that the staff has done and the applicant to try to minimize the amount of light distribution, so not really changing any of the side lighting and putting most lighting in the back, which I see a bank of shrubbery or trees behind. And I do appreciate the situation for the neighbors because there's open space on either side and there are houses across. I think one of the things that I'm considering is that there has been lighting here and there has been activity here. And, you know, it is a community where we're all trying to live together. And it seems as though up to this point, it's been fairly compatible, aside from headlights in your front, front living room. So I think if there's a way that the congregation can be kind of mindful going forward with this proposal of the community, and the community can kind of give the input, I'd still be compelled to, to want to help you move forward with this security measure. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments?
Yeah, Vice Chair Donback just stole the sentiment right away from me. But I, I would be supportive of moving forward with approving a variance. But I'm also very sympathetic to light pollution and concerns around a dark night sky. But I weigh that against mitigating security concerns and the risks that the applicants have very clearly articulated. And for the reasons Commissioner Donback set forth and in weighing the information that's been presented to us, I would be generally supportive of moving forward with an exception to allow this.
You know, this is one of the darkest spots in our town. And I understand the need for lighting in a parking lot at the same time. The reason, the reason that the hotspot exists is because the poles are low. And the fixture is high in intensity so that it can spill the light to the middle of the parking lot. If we brought the fixtures up, we'd lower the foot candles at the base, but we'd also lower the foot candles in the middle of the parking lot. So we're faced with making an extremely bright area, quite honestly, in relative terms of parking lots in our community, against an extremely dark edge, which has its own issues related to light. If you imagine a flashlight that you raise and lower onto a surface, it gets brighter as you bring it down and it gets whiter or darker as you take it up. But also, that intensity of light is reflected. And so while we may have no spillage of the light, in other words, the ray of light may not be touching property lines, the reflection of the light off of that surface is certainly going to be something that is visible from the second floors of those units and as a very bright object because of the very darkness that surrounds it. And so my, my offer of mitigation here is, I don't, is, do you know the use permit timing? Or?
No, but I can look it up right now.
Because what I would, we have a use permit that allows use on this property for a certain period of time, for a certain number of days. And, and so within the context of that use of the property, I think that lighting should be contained. In other words, if it's nine to nine, six days a week, that's when the lights can operate sunset to nine, right? As a, as a compromise to the variance of allowing the extra illumination. The other, the other part of it for me is that those current existing fixtures, which are on the existing building, are probably about eighteen feet high plus. And I know the one in the gable on the church is thirty feet in the air. Those become a nuisance because there's almost no way to stop them from being visible from adjacent properties, because it's going to be a bright light up in the air. Now, we can mitigate that with hours of operation, but we can also mitigate it somewhat by bringing it down. So it's less of a nuisance. So I would offer that we limit the light activity to the activity of the use permit and that we... and that we do what we can to reduce those existing fixtures that are being replaced, I believe, probably with more intense lighting than's currently there, to a lower fixture height. And if you look at the photometrics, you know, they're in the entry range right now of those existing lights. They're, they're at the kind of two-foot candles at the ground level. Those level, those levels are gonna get brighter as we bring the light, light down, but it's also gonna spill a little bit more into the, and reflect a little bit more into the driveway. So for me, that's where I'm at from a support standpoint for the variance. I understand the need for it. I've been on that property, obviously, in the middle of the night and I picked up kids there after 5:30 from school. So I know that there's a need, but there's also an issue in terms of compatibility in that area, not only with the neighbors, but with that open space by itself.
I, I do have a question. Are there other safety measures in place beyond lighting? Do you have, I know that you have your guard, unfortunately. But do you have cameras? Are there, so there's, there are other, you've, you've provided other safety measures?
We do have cameras that currently are unable to pick up license plates in the parking lot when it's dark.
If you could come up to the, the microphone because we're being recorded.
We also secured the entrance doors to the sanctuary. We got doors that had bulletproof glass and we're just more secure.
This discussion has been illuminating. I really have. It really has. And I, and I actually have to say how grateful I am for fellow commissioners. We've got Commissioner, Police Sergeant Wirick here who understands security. We've got our architects. We've got people who really understand this. And I think that, I hope everybody can hear that we're all trying to come up with a solution that does indeed provide the best possible environment for the community, for the congregations, for the school. So I do think we all agree that lighting is a requirement, that we need to have this. And I think we're just asking for help on trying to make sure that we mitigate that as much as possible for the neighbors because Sonoma does not have a dark sky compliant ordinance at this point. But I think it's something that we do want to aim for because we all really value our dark sky, especially right up there on that open space. While we like dark sky, we also have the Stompers, right? If you've ever been to a Stompers game or lived on Blue Wing, you know how bright those lights are. And somehow the Fox still managed to make it right into my backyard on Blue Wing. So while that is a concern, it doesn't seem to bother the Fox. So I do think it's an area where we have to be balancing the needs, the very important needs of the community, the congregation coming and going. We don't want people having safety issues because it's dark. You guys are a community. You're clearly a faith-based community that does support people. So I'm gonna ask for you to just continue to do that as we go forward with this and work with the neighbors. And if there's going to be some issues or some concerns with the neighbors, that you just continue to have that communication. Because I think that's going to resolve things. For the gentleman who lives across the street, and I'm sure the headlights shining into your living room every day, and the headlights have gotten so bright, those like new headlights, there's not a whole lot you can do about that. But it's just these kind of things, like, like we were talking about the unintended consequences that if we just, as a community, work together and just kind of try and resolve these things as a community and not even having to worry about going through the city, but, or code enforcement. We, we have code enforcement when we need it. But the more that we can just agree to always come together on this issue, I think that we'll find a place where we manage the needs of the congregation and the needs of the community. Thank you.
So a question for Commissioner Willers. Did you want to put a motion forward with some additional language?
So there's a lot of use permits. So the school has a separate one, then the church. And so I would recommend that the condition of approval just pertained to, restricted to the use as identified in the use permits. We can keep it general and then give staff, we'll look it up and then we can add it to the actual final conditions of approval. We'll look up all of them for those different uses and we'll reference those. Cause they don't look like they were amended. It looks like they were separate, treated separately. So, so we'll can, look into that. It sounds like, so that was one. The other one that I heard was to modify the lights that aren't actually currently being proposed to be modified at this time to bring those into compliance, reduce height, reduce the glare on, that are on the exterior adjacent to the drive aisle, correct?
At least down to 15, which is compliant.
Okay. And then the other thing that we can do, that we can always come back, not necessarily to you all, but after they're installed, we can also look to those lights as well. I think one of the ideas about putting them at 10 feet was also because of the large amount of park behind. Those trees are taller than 10 feet. So that'll help block a lot of that from the area. And so something that we could also look at is some landscaping on this site, if feasible, within their property lines to help, if necessary, farther down the line. For right now, though, it sounded like those were the two main conditions that we would, that you would look to add to your motion. So again, it's going to be to add that the time be restricted to what is allowed under the conditional use permits. And then the second being to bring the lights into conformance that aren't being proposed as part of this package.
Okay, I'll try. Let's see, I'll make a motion to approve, where's our item here? To approve, considerate, or to, to approve the application for a design review and variance for UA 2421 to allow new exterior lighting that exceeds the allowed foot candles located at 525, or 521 West Main Street. And with the added conditions of approval that shall be established by staff for the hours that are approved under the use permit as the ti, as the hours of time that the lights may operate. And also that the highest standard shall conform to the 15-foot height limit. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donback?
Yes.
Youth Member Miller?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously?
Thank you for a good discussion.
Thank you.
All right. And the last item is 4.4, which is another lighting celebration. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to adopt a resolution approving the application for design review and variance to allow for modifications to existing exterior lighting that exceeds the allowed foot candles located at 35 West Napa Street. I don't know, there's no one here, so I'm assuming that there's been no ex parte communication. All right.
And the applicant is actually on Zoom as they're in another seat. So, another parking lot, very different type of parking lot, but still security and safety being the request for this variance as well. So this project location, we all know very well, at 35 West Napa, right on the plaza. It is our Bank of America and our commercial, commercial zone and in our historic overlay. The site is .7 acres. And what you see here is what we see on Napa. And obviously, we have two streets. It's a little dollar sign because I took it off of a Google Street View. So if you didn't notice, the congregation had a cross. So, yes, this would be Google. Sorry, I did not include the Google name or site of them. The proposed project is to update the building lighting and install new parking lot lighting. The proposed lighting includes to replace eight wall-mounted fixtures, six pole-mounted fixtures, and 10 pendant canopy-mounted fixtures. Install new three-wall-mounted fixtures, two canopy-mounted fixtures, and then remove one-wall-mounted and four floodlights that are currently on the building. So all new fixtures, again, are gonna be the 3,000 Kelvin. And as proposed, the light fixtures do include the internal screening to direct the light down and to limit spillage. I say limit because it does exceed over. Part of that is also, we have street lighting on that front, too. And then on the sidewalk on the side, we have no street lighting. So it's kind of one of those give and takes that we have in this area. And again, I'm leaving that up to Planning Commission. A variance is requested to exceed the allowed foot candles for the intensity of the lighting. And also, and this is for clarification from our applicant as well, that the parking lot lighting would not be set on a timer. We do, sorry, we do use, there is some parking in that area where the charging facilities are. It's not getting a lot of light in that space. So that's something to clarify with them tonight. And then ATM facilities would always have lighting. What I don't know, and part of the question that I would have as well, something, is there a way to have them, you know, in parking structures now, they pop on as you drive into a parking structure? I don't know if that's feasible with ATMs, but I don't think so. I think with the new state law, that it's, it's very specific on what's required for security and safety purposes at ATMs. And plus, I wouldn't want it to turn off if somebody was there. So, let's see, next slide. So just to talk a little bit more, I was educated on this. This is my first bank for lighting. So the California Financial Code section that I provided in the staff report, 13041, requires that lighting be provided for ATM machines during hours of darkness and provide for specific foot candle requirements. So this project will exceed the state's minimum requirement, which is 10-foot candles at the face of an ATM machine, and then two-foot candles within 50 feet and two-foot candles within 60 feet of an ATM parking, in a parking lot. So that is actually set in our financial code. Obviously, that is not the same as what our parking require, or, sorry, not parking, but our lighting requirements are in the security section. And so I did want to bring that to your attention. The ATM machine, as we know, is under that canopy. And so that's where most of the lights are being proposed are under that canopy. And that does help contain the light as well as the walls along the perimeter. Staff did work with the applicant to reduce the number of overall lights. There was an additional light pole being proposed. And also the foot candles overall. But they still are exceeding the minimum requirement. So that's where we're at today. These are the proposed lights for the site, very similar to what you saw previously, a little different design. And then also on the walls, this is what's being proposed today. The canopy one will have a downward-facing light. And all this information was provided in your staff report. So going back to the requirements again, the intensity, again, parking lots that we talked about, no more than five-foot candles at the base of a fixture. Building mounting lights shall not exceed the five-foot candles five feet from the light source. Security lighting that would be a maximum of three-foot candles at the ground level of an entrance. So none of those are compliant. The lighting schedule, as far as having the timers to turn off the light fixtures when the business is closed, again, ATM machines are different, but the business itself in the parking lot, I think, is part of the discussion tonight. And then shielding, the shields are again built into and directed on those light sources now. And then design review, there are no color or material changes. The fixtures are being proposed on the existing light poles. And no, the color will match the existing light poles. And there, the new fixtures will, new fixtures will also match the existing. So if Planning Commission determines the findings can be met for the variance, then staff recommends approving the design review and variance for this application based on the findings and conditions of approval that have been provided to you. And that concludes staff's presentation. And again, the applicant is online and able to answer any questions that you may have.
So Commissioner, have any questions for the applicant?
Or staff?
So Jennifer, can you pull up that, the photometric of the ATM area?
Yep.
There we go. So.
Can you see the numbers? Or do you want me to bring up the plans?
So my understanding is the entire photometric is outside of compliance or outside of requirement of the financial code.
So the fi, so if you look at the compliance area, the 50-foot radius, it is two-foot candles minimum. And so that is correct. So that's what I stated, that it exceeds the minimum requirement. And so two-foot candles being the minimum, it looks like there's some areas that are at two at that 50-foot mark, and then the some at three, and then those other ones that will exceed. And I think that's partially a combination of street the poles and the parking lot as well as the building. So yes, that's part of.
Okay. And then, and it's essentially exceeding it by, now, what, what's the UTM?
The ATM?
No, there's two ATMs, then there's UTMs.
So that's the, those are the type of lighting. So if you go to, I can break it up in the, those are the specific lights.
Under something, okay. So the area that, around the ATMs are, is essentially exceeding it almost threefold from what the.
Correct.
Standard, yeah, okay. So it's extremely bright relative to what's required at the ATMs, which basically makes the ATM a storefront. So. That answers my question. Oh, a second question.
Okay.
Are the light standards within compliance for the parking lot in terms of height?
I'd have to double check.
Cause I didn't see that.
I think they were fif, I think they were at 15, but I'll double check.
This is one bank, Jennifer. Is this being done bank by bank? Because then we'll have Chase and then we'll have US Bank. So is this like something where we can define a policy or at least a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Yes.
A precedent?
Well, we can, well, in a precedent in the sense of this one, I'm, you know, if, when we work, I don't want to call it a precedent in the sense that this one's a little different. This is under a canopy. Not all of them are enclosed like this one either. And so they're all in, like Chase Bank is literally open, all open. And it has street lights and other lights that play into that lighting scheme. Wells Fargo is off to the side of the building and is also a little bit further back. So everyone is gonna be different. I think what our goal with the night sky is going to be trying to attach use and user with night sky requirements and the foot candles and the lumens. And then we're gonna have to tie, you know, match the financial code. And that sets the, the max standard.
And, and do we have to make a decision immediately to make sure we're in compliance with the financial code?
So that's why I'm requesting the, part of the, that variance will actually be triggered regardless, just to match that finance code. Cause we don't have it written in our code that state law. Because we don't have it written in our code that state law will prevail in that specific instance. So we like to write that into codes, um, when state law prevails. I didn't even know the financial code had those types of requirements, honestly.
I, I, so the, uh, the question I have is, you know, um, even though it's under a canopy, it's again, almost up to 40-foot candles. So is there an oppor- if 10 is the minimum, is there an opportunity to choose lighting that brings it down a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
So this hinges on the applicant's choice in lighting? Or this, that's what it? I, I guess-
I would let them, we can talk about it with them, they're on, I think the engineer, um, is on as well as the permit about their selection specifically on those lights. Um, again, not a lighting engineer, I don't understand. I did kind of put it out there, like, this is the goal. And we've been working on it for a long time. And so we're kind of at this point where we need planning commission direction.
It just seems like it, there's a, quite a disparity between what the code requires and what the applicants are hoping for. But that's not a question.
Hey, a morgue only requires 30.
So is it possible to, to at- talk, ask the applicant if they can explain? Or if, if there are these options to try to bring the foot candles kind of closer to the minimum requirements?
She's available to ask questions. Her name is Kimberly. Kimberly, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. David will be able to answer that question better. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry.
We're letting David in.
Okay, can everybody hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, my name's David Bruce. I am a project manager for GMR, and we are the lighting design firm for Bank of America. This site has fallen into the exterior lighting program for Bank of America, which has two main goals. The first is to upgrade all existing fixtures LED or efficiency standards. And then the second would be to meet the financial code minimums. So I think one of the main questions we have right now is, the lighting is exceeding what the financial code minimums are. The issue we are running into is, this is an existing site. So there are existing fixtures in place. When you just begin swapping out fixtures, you're going to have bright spots just based on how the lighting is. So we've done a lighting survey at this location, and I can tell you that, you know, the lighting is already exceeding in a lot of these areas where you're seeing 30s. In existing spots, it's already doing that just because of the location of the existing fixtures and how they were spaced out. So if you go back and try and remove fixtures, which we have removed a few on this site, you end up just trying to patch a building and it looks very, uh, poor typically when we try and do that. So we try and avoid that as much as possible. Most of the excess you're seeing is under the canopies. And again, that factors in the height of the canopy and the type of fixture being used. An LED fixture is going to be brighter than the existing one. The height is really what determines it. You also have lumen output. This is a fairly low lumen fixture. We could look into something else, but I really think this, this is not really changing what's on site currently. A lot of what it is, is we are replacing the existing to upgrade it to LED, and then we are adding new in which there are failing areas to meet those minimums. So even if you look at the parking lot, you can see that we have readings in the six, sevens. But there's a reading at the edge of that 50 that is 2.5, barely meeting the minimum. So because it's an existing site, there's only so many ways to get light where it needs to go. So you're using a combination of poles and wall fixtures to reach that one point to get it where it needs to be. Does that make sense? Or is there any other questions, some clarification maybe?
How tall are the-
Which I want to ramble on.
How tall are the existing light poles?
I need to double check on that, actually, because I, we typically don't list the height for the existing. We just say to replace at the existing height, since we're not replacing the pole. So I don't have that information in front of me right now.
I might be able to get it here. All right, it looks like the poles are... That looks like a walnut pole. Let's see. Of course, it's all, says everything but the pole here. I've got like a nine-foot and an eight-foot. That's what I've got on my, on my paperwork.
No, it's definitely going to be-
No, they're taller than that.
I think they're-
They have everything but the pole. So I'm going to keep looking. If I, if I find it, I'll let you know.
So previously, we had proposed to replace all light poles and add a new light pole, and it would be at 15 feet. I think the existing poles, um, they are taller than the existing building, which, uh, with that pitched roof, I would probably say are 20. I think that roof is probably 20 feet. So the light poles, I would assume are plu- over 20 feet, 20, 25 feet, um, from that height. So, um, on those locations. And I could not find, I did look for the original light plan for this site, and I did not find it.
Yeah, I'll keep looking though.
Other question for the applicant?
Any other comments, light commissioners?
This site, I, I think, um, you mentioned a little bit of a hodgepodge. This site is a hodgepodge. And you've heard of putting lipstick on a pig? This is putting a headlamp on a pig. I just don't see it as being all that useful. And I know B of A, and I know how companies work, and they just have to get their compliance. Why can't we just make it compliant and not make it radiant? Just make it so we meet the financial code and not exceed that and not make it this bright spot on the corner of our plaza that's going to look like a morgue. So that would be my comment.
So are, are we, did you open for public hearing?
Thank you. I apologize. Would, is there anyone in the public who would like to comment? There's no one in the room. I don't know if there's anyone online, and that's, that's why I kind of bypassed that.
Just a technicality. So it's, we're coming back to the commission.
Yes, we are.
I, I, we have a, you know, we have a current code. This building was built before the current code. If there's a change in the lighting program for this property, it should come in compliance with the current code. The financial code as well as our development code. That's my feeling about it. I don't think we need to grant a variance to accommodate, um, a condition because of their, they want to change their program. I'm, I too don't think that the idea of over, over illuminated, under canopy ATM area on the corner of the plaza is exactly what we want to do. It reminds me of the bright sign that sits out illuminated in front of any retail space along any corridor, circulation corridor, what it says is, "Look at me, look at me, look at me." And I think what we ought to do is go the reverse. I think the lighting in general in our community should come into compliance with, with more modern standards. And that is, yes, safety, but to darker, subtler is better.
I would, um, I'm kind of feeling the same way. It looked as though the parking lot was around the five-ish for the most part. And, um, again, it gets to a point where it's 2.5. So I'm, I'm more concerned about the ATM, um, lighting and trying to get that down. And I'm amazed that there aren't other lights out there that we, that could be used to kind of bring down those foot candles.
Yeah. Again, I'm all for, I'm all for safety, right? But I think, I think the application before us and the request for this, um, variance, it's just div- is wholly, uh, divergent from the intent of our code. And it represents, in some cases, threefold what, uh, is allowed at, at maximum. I think that, uh, I don't think that it's too much to ask to simply, uh, meet, the code as it's written. And I'm not, at this time, uh, prepared to support, uh, the variance.
So I, I guess the question for staff is, um, possible to work with the applicant to, for them to come back with, uh, under canopy lights that are more in line with, uh, minimum requirements of the financial code?
Yes, I think the lighting engineer did, did raise his hand. If you want to let him just speak. What I will say though is, um, I, Kimberly and I have been working on this, and so I know that she's still willing to work on it some more. So I would, um, ask that we look a little closer to provide direction to them tonight so that they can work closer on that and what you're willing, like, that give and take, right? So if we want, again, going back to the conversation about foot candles and, you know, the height of the light, and then if we're dropping it down, and then it gets more intense, and then spread conversation. And so looking at some of those, where the existing poles are, because again, those are existing wires already, there may be areas where we're going to have to add another light. And then, so that's where I want to make sure that we are getting that understanding and direction around the parking. I think we understand the perimeter of the building conversation, um, pretty well, and how to kind of constrain or reduce lights and things like that, um, and look at opportunities there. But we can look closer. So if Planning Commission wants to hear.
Well, I mean, I'd like to hear from their response. But again, I, I think I didn't hear major objections to the parking lights and what the height or the lumen, the foot candles that were, that are proposed. It was more under the canopy of the ATM.
But it's also the timing of the parking lot lighting too, because I believe the proposal is for 24 hours on the-
So that's why-
On the EVs as well.
It's not clear is what that timing would, would that end in the parking lot. And so there, I was looking back at the plans. There is a timer, but there's no, let's see, where'd that timer go? There is a time clock control option. So I was just looking at in general details of what they've put on their building plans. But there, but whether or not it's being actually utilized, because these are just typical notes. And so we, that would be something that we would want to make sure is set and understood. If we want to make, if we don't want parking lot lights after 10 in that site, or if we do want to allow at a reduced amount, because that is also what's provided in the code too. Those are the types of things, if we want to have direction around that. Obviously, the ATM itself has to stay lit. But those are-
But isn't there 50-foot perimeter, perimeter that has to be at least two foot candles?
Yes, and so I think that was, you know, with the direction that you guys are, that we're wanting to talk about. Obviously, we have minimums that have to be met. And so how do we meet those minimums, providing that light? And what that source of that light is to reach that point is what he was talking about. And at that point, it's right next to the wall. That's the wall next to, um, the sidewalk, that low wall that were the state landmark, uh, sinus that nobody knows about, unless you walk to the Bank of America, ATM. But it's right next to that area. Is there an opportunity to put a light there? I don't know.
The EV charging stations, they're, it's kind of in the back of the parking lot, right?
Yes, it is.
Is it in the back? Can you, I mean, people charge their cars 24/7, so-
But the parking lot is also signed that it's private parking for the hours of use of the property. And, you know, the 50-foot radius around the ATMs in terms of the, um, foot candles that are allowed for that 50-foot radius, there are parking spaces within access of the ATMs there. So, you know, technically, that parking lot is off limits after business hours for, for Bank of America. And we know it's used differently.
So how, how do, how do the EVs-
But, but, and I don't know if the EV chargers have, have internal illumination like most EV chargers do that are on the site.
It's something I can look at now that the time is shifting.
Just curious if they, you know, I mean, people are charging their cars at all hours, so. And if they're, if they're set up there for that very thing in that parking lot.
No, my, my point is that the parking lot is controlled by B of A as not accessible after business hours. It's private parking for Bank of America. And so, you know, the idea that the EV chargers need to be illuminated 24/7 because the parking lot is only open during business hours is kind of contrary to me.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the concern I have is making sure that the ATM is safe and illuminated because people may, because that is open 24 hours. So, um, and so that's where I have that consideration that, um, it'd probably be reasonable, thinking that it's going to be open for 24 hours, to just kind of, again, try to minimize that, the foot candles in that space.
So I'll make a direction comment from my point of view. I, and I think I already stated it, but, um, I believe that we ought to bring this as close to compliant with our current development code as possible. And the illumination areas around the ATMs, while they're high under the financial code, higher than what is allowed by our development code, those are the maximums that we should be achieving in those areas in order to achieve what our development code tries to achieve generally. And that is generally low levels of illumination.
I would sign on to that method of thought.
So what about the, so the existing poles being higher, they weren't being proposed at this point to be replaced? So my, that's part of my question as well. Earlier comment was bring those into compliant potentially. I thought I heard that. And so that would be something, you know, as a commission, is that the direction from the commission?
A- again, when we, from my point of view, when we look at the, the, the foot candle measurements, I think the highest foot candle measurement for those, for the lighting was around seven. I know we're looking for five, um, but maybe I was incorrect. And then there's a, a portion in that 50-foot perimeter that was almost at two. So I think we have to consider that the, the requirement of having at least two in the 50-foot parameter. And I don't think seven is too overwhelming. So it seems like the existing light poles with the new lights and the projected foot, um, candles would be okay for the parking lot.
Yeah, it looks like those are 20 feet high that are in the existing parking lot. When you look at it, uh, from Google Street. So, yeah. They are around- Probably the same height.
Yeah, I think they're-
They're probably the same height.
Our street lights are pretty low actually, but they're not night sky compliant, so. Our streetlights are pretty low actually, but they're not night sky compliant, so.
Yeah, I know.
Um, I don't know why this isn't showing. I don't know how to get it to show. Sorry about that. Um, I'm trying to show my screen. Um, in the plans, there are, so there's one where it's two lights and at the base it's fourteen. That's the one that's against, um, the Chase Bank side, which is their second, the second building that they own on their lot. So that's the light against that one. Um, and then further into the parking lot, there is, um, there's lights on the back of the building. And then if you go into the parking lot when you have the two lanes, um, there's one light there that's three and that's directing light out. And that is, at that base it's seven. That's where you see the seven there. Um, so those are the two poles that are on that site. And then we have, I would say, a lot on the building itself that's providing the additional lighting. Um, and so that's, I think, where there's more opportunity potentially to reduce if we aren't, um, able to, you know, maybe that's where the reduction occurs. As, and then is that acceptable?
That's my take on it. I don't see anything egregious that's caused by the existing poles. Uh, I, I think the opportunity to be had with eliminating some of that superfluous lighting is on the several fixtures that are attached to the building. And that's what drives that intensity that I don't think we wanna see quite as much of.
Okay. Um, any other comments, um, before we make a motion? In the sense of, uh, making sure that clarity is being provided. So what I heard was reduction around the ATM, um, to the minimum required. So this, the fifty feet at mark and then the, at the ATM itself, um, which is in the financial code section. And then also to just look at overall reduction in, um, the foot candles around basically the building um, as it is associated with the parking lot. Cause it's lighting, providing lighting for the parking lot essentially.
Yes, I think that's accurate.
Okay. Kimberly? Can you unmute for a second?
Yes.
Do you want to request a continuance to a date certain or do you want to keep it open ended and then we'll just set a new notice for this project?
You can just keep it open.
Okay.
And then just send a notice, yeah.
Okay. So that applicant would be a request for a notice. So the motion would include a date certain, um, and it would be a date to be determined.
Okay. So do we have to make a motion if it's staying open?
So you would make a motion and continue the item?
We make a motion to continue this to a date uncertain.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Nugent?
I.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donbach?
Yes.
Youth Member Miller?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all for, again, work, helping to work through this complicated issue. Moving on to item five, are there any other items for discussion? From the commission?
So this would be, um, this item number five is items for discussion that are not public hearings. Um, and so we don't have anything agendized.
Okay. Item six, any director comments or announcements?
Um, I wanted to introduce our two new planners, which one you met already, and then Jacob is our other new planner. Um, and he's been here, um, five days, six days, seven? I think we're on number seven.
Eight.
Eight, okay.
We're so glad you're here and I'm sure Jennifer is really glad you're here.
Welcome to both of you. Glad you're here.
Um, so yeah, we're welcoming them. I do want to also let you know or remind you that our meeting for October, um, our normally scheduled meeting is canceled. The new meeting date is October twenty-fourth, um, and I've sent that out. Um, I also wanted to let you know that I was unable to kind of work out a date for planning commission and city council to work, to, to have a meeting together to talk about the general plant land use. Um, just everybody's calendars are crazy this month. Um, and city council's gonna have a special meeting on the fourteenth. And what we're going to do is I'm gonna present what I presented to you and then also present what your comments back to us, um, were as well um, at their meeting. And that meeting, um, if they approve it tomorrow night, will be on October the fourteenth. Um, and then you guys of course are invited, if you're in town, to come. Um, and then we will also ask, um, the chair to present. Um, and if the chair is not able, then ask him to appoint somebody to present planning commission's, um, feedback as well at that meeting.
When is the special meeting scheduled?
October fourteenth.
That's when you're going to present?
What we presented to you all.
Okay, so that's October fourteenth.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll put on the record that I will not be present for the meeting of October twenty-fourth, but I will be thinking of all of you from the beach in Mexico. And not watching you on YouTube.
Please, you don't even have to think. All right, um, item number seven, commissioner reports and comments. There's nothing agendized there, so.
It's open for you all to. Comments, questions?
I'm glad we have, uh, associate planners on board.
Yes, welcome and well done, Vice Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Much support. So with that, um, for item eight, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn or should we stay here?
So moved.
Second.